Welcome to the May meeting of Wycomical County Board of Education. And as we always do, we begin our meetings with a pledge of the flag led by one of our students.
Thank you very much. And he's a figure guarder at Pinehurst Elementary School. He was here with his family and Aaron, you did a fabulous job. You're welcome. And I understand that this is a special day. Am I right? It's your birthday.
We'll sing Happy Birthday, but I'll back off from the mic. Very good, Erin. Thank you. Three point two, approval of today's agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Motion is our second. All those in favor say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, case carried. Three point three, a moment of silence. These things are always very sad, obviously, when we've lost a colleague. And in this case, a very young student, Mariah Marie Green, on Tuesday, April fifth, passed away. Just an 11-year-old child. I can't say anymore, but how sad that is for all of us and her family. Our prayers go out to them. So it'd take a couple of minutes to have a moment of silence to honor Mariah in her own way. Thank you all. Okay, three point four, student reports to the board. We'll start out tonight with Parkside High School Cassidy Ashen. Cassidy, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Cassidy Ashen, Parkside Student. This past week, our Ritz-Briggs Club team conceded in the world championship in Dallas Texas. There were six of their teams reporting to their respective champions. We had seven wrestlers named as National Wrestling Coach Association and US Community Board Scholarship Scholar All-American. This award required a GPA of 5.5 or higher while being a varsity wrestler. We also have one wrestler named The Character and Newship All-American. One of our female wrestlers, Gillian Chase, was selected to the 2022 MD State Wrestling Association Hall of Academics. Our girls athletics track team was named Bayside South Champions last Tuesday. Seniors Sarah Knapp and David Philar were recognized as the Bayside Athletic Conference Senior Scholar Acting Board Day on May 2nd. Artwork from several Parkside students were featured in the 2021-2022 iPublic County Art exhibit at the Public County Library in April. We held our first prom in three years this past weekend. Grand March was held in the Parkside Auditorium, the Prom of the Civic Center, and after Prom of Crown. It was a beautiful event and students seemed to have a blast, and I will say I did. And I'm always grateful for the chance to have this formal event in May February so last night. Induction ceremonies for six honor societies, including that honor society, occurred last evening. We were very fortunate to have Mr. Brandon Deal as the guest speaker for the event. And our orchestra performed their grand concert last week. Band and choir concerts are coming up this week and next, as well as senior awards and CTE awards ceremonies. Thank you for what I have to share and I hope that our next husband enjoys this much fun, and so thank you for the past two years.
Thank you, Cassidy. Thank you very much for your participation throughout the school year. Next, from Jameson Bennett High School, Hannah Kim.
Good evening, Superintendent and Port holders. My name is Kara Lewis and I'm the Executive President of the SGA. Hannah is at a tennis competition right now, so she could not be there. I'm very honored to be able to start attending these meetings and share about all the great things happening at JNA. In the past month, our SGA had a transition meeting where the newest elected members met with the old ones and we started planning for the year to come and introducing ourselves to the school via social media. For the week leading up to Earth Day, our environmental club works collaboratively with the school to make posters and backdrops highlighting the things we want to protect and natural home. Our bands of orchestra also held their individual concerts, both of which went great. We had a spirit week that got pretty good participation, geared for teacher appreciation game, where local community partners helped us to show our teachers how much we value them. We also recently had a mental health week where we had activities and quizzes during lunch and resources handed on to students during class to promote mental health and our wellbeing. That week, we also had a career day where the post office, military, lifeguard groups, and key months airlines came in to top of our students. I would like to give special recognition to Rosie Gao, Hannah Kim, and Jack Mitchell, who competed together at the 37th Annual Eastern Trail Map Competition held at SCU, where they placed third, which is amazing. Rosie Gao also got third place in the individual competition. We are in the middle of our last AP testing week, which is going very well considering the time constraints we have with our semester block schedule. As far as sports go, we're now getting into the spring playoff season. In the past month, we held a walk-through pep rally honoring our spring sports teams with students limping the Halloween and the gift lamps. So far, we have our girls tennis team won Bayside South and are competing in Baysides today. Our sports awards are going to be held on the 21st of this month. We're sadly sending goodbye to our seniors soon. Prom tickets are on sale this week for our prom on the 21st with the theme City of Stars. We're having our senior awards night on May 16th and are having a rising seniors night this week for our juniors, where they can learn about the college application process and get information and resources. Lastly, our newest SGA is meeting soon to start a calendar to get ready for the new year. We're all very excited to be in. Thank you so much. It was nice meeting you all.
Thank you very much for participating for Hannah. Thank you. Wycomical High School Ava Batista.
Good evening. My name is Ava Batista and I will be representing Wycomical High School this evening. Just this afternoon, we hosted our annual Teacher Appreciation Luncheon as a belated celebration of Teacher Appreciation Week. We had catering provided by Matt Hatter Cafe and we provided all of our teachers and staff with either double-walled cups to represent their thick skin, color-changing cups to represent their adaptability in trying times, or buckets, because we should always have a bucket where it's just in case. Also being celebrated, English teacher Emma Coe was awarded the Outstanding Mentor Teacher Award at the Regional PDS Celebration at Salisbury University in her very first year as a mentor teacher. Our choir teacher, Mr. Harvey, performed with his band, the Stephen Philip Harvey Pop-Tex, in our auditorium on Friday, May 6th. They played six jazz pieces that integrated scientific spheres into the art and included lectures to the middle school students that visited our auditorium for the performance. Also performing well are spring sport teams of the new grade on the field. On April 12th, our baseball team beat Kokomo 11 to 0 and then Chris Field at the very next day 12 to 2. On April 22nd, they beat Washington 10 to 3. Our softball girls beat Kokomo as well, Chris Field as well, 22 to 5, and Washington as well, 13 to 10. At the Bayside South Championships in Triple Jump, Jonathan Prushin placed first. Senior athletes BJ Cook and Courtney Lowe were recognized at the Bayside Scholars Dinner for their leadership in athletics as well as their academic achievements on the 2nd. Also, on May 2nd, Wyhigh's next gen seniors have accepted approximately $210,000 in grant funds to support their college expenditures for the 2022 to 2023 fall and spring semester. Our senior prom will be held this weekend at the Fountains. We have secured a 3D camera, which our students are very excited about. And we look forward to this making a fun, cumulative event at the end of our senior year. We will also be holding a senior brunch send-off on May 20th during the second period, which will also be catered by Matt Hatter Cafe. Until though this is my very last meeting, I'm happy to announce that we have elected our new executive board president at our last general assembly meeting. Please look forward to our impressive Julia Matthews sharing our accomplishments and achievements next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava. Mordella High School Zoe DeBasko.
Good evening, members of the board. Mordella has had some exciting events. This past weekend, we hosted our junior senior prom and had a great turnout and it was such a success thanks to the leadership of our class advisors, teachers, staff, and parent volunteers. We recently had our Teacher Appreciation Week, where our faith-based partner, the Highland Movement to the Staff, PTA gave small dance to the staff each day, as well as a catered lunch. The administration also recognized the staff each day, small enough in an umbrella, because it's always sunny at Mordella. Next week, we start middle school impact testing and high school starts the following week. We also were just completed the first week of AP test and students will have all of these completed at the conclusion of this week. Our seniors have many exciting events coming up, including our senior awards, which will happen on the 17th. On the 20th, seniors will be taking cap and gown pictures, as well as their college and career pictures, where students will wear something that represents their post-graduation plans. And we will have a senior celebration where each senior will share the plans for after graduation and receive their school-level rewards. At the end of the day, seniors will be a "you are my one card" to recognize a staff member of our school who has made a difference in that senior's life. Later that evening, we'll be hosting our senior social, which includes seniors' relatives, senior boards, and dinner with their families. We will also be having a senior baccalaureate at Asbury Church in Sharp Town on the 22nd. And lastly, our seniors are legally awaiting a graduation on July 1st. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all four of our student reports to the board. Been very enjoyable having you here this year. We know you'll do well as you go forward and you're on very bright futures. Thanks again. And a big round of applause for this team. Okay, three point five, public comment. The public comment section, the agenda is an opportunity for the superintendent and board to listen to individuals' uncomments on topics concerning Wycomical County Public Schools. The board chairman has the right to limit public comments and blame for those concerning personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals, appeals or legal matters that are before the board, negotiations, and topics that are more appropriately addressed in closed session, or privately with a staff member. Only verbal comments are permitted during the public comment session of a board meeting. Written, printed, audio, or video material may be submitted via comments at WCBOE.org. No signs or posters may be displayed by the public during board meetings. Each speaker shall address all comments directly to the board and speak only from the designated location for public comments. Any member of the public who wishes to share their comments on one or more of the three finalists for Wycomical Superintendent's Schools must do so through the survey site that has been established and/or by submitting material to comments at WCBOE.org. All comments and survey responses must be filed between May 5th and May 12th. As is custom, we have three minutes and there'll be a few questions. So there's seven now, public comments. And so we'll take them in the order that they sound up. And so we'll begin with children of friends and family attending Wycomical Schools, Pam Hutchinson. Issue is curriculum. Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board of Education members. I'm here on behalf of the children. The main reason is an 80-minute class for juniors and seniors. You have four main subjects, which is English, math, history, or social studies, civics, and then science. Instead of spreading out the class and have an hour for the extent of the school year, you've got 80 minutes for one semester. If you don't repeat and repeat and repeat, it has been proven that that will have a better effect on the children than it would give one semester. When do they review this? I've talked to children right now that cannot tell me what a compound subject is, what a verb is, what an action verb is, what a verb of tense is, what a gering is, and so forth and so on. They keep coming out that vibe going, one day and I'll say, well, I'm like a parlor, I shout and turn. She said, who? None of that is being taught. And if it is, it's being taught for the moment. The kids need to have education other than for the moment, for a test. They need all the help they can get. You have kids, honest to be, they, if you want to teach such education, that's fine and then do it the proper manner. You're packing these foul words, foul books, and so forth and so on. You don't read that. History, math. Teach the basic math, add, subtract, multiply, divide. Get the flashcards, parents. Get the flashcards and go over and over and over. A and B should come later. Algebra is wonderful if you use it. I took a class in algebra, got an A, but if you put A plus B in front of me, I'd say, why? Because I don't use it. If you don't use it, you will lose it. And that's a fact. If you reinforce and go an hour for your main subjects, I don't care if you need the credits or not. I've got a job doing dishes. I've got a job doing dishes. Isn't that wonderful? Well, I don't even, I don't even have to go to school until I have the license to have access to the deck. Now, that doesn't work. And I know kids are let out of school so they can do whatever. That's not right. They're there to learn. Everybody is not academic. Let the kids learn to use their hands. Let them use common sense. None of that is being taught in schools. Go back to six, six, four hours. You cannot order somebody's three minutes.
I'm sure you can't do that. Thank you very much.
I hope everybody else is reading exactly what I'm saying.
Thank you. The next speaker, Representative WCBA President, Jones Bennett.
Good evening. I rise with three messages. First, to recognize with respect and in support of the work of educators, teachers, and support staff. Educators' dedication of time and expertise to facilitate student success academically, lift students emotionally, and assist students in building respectful relationships with others is greatly appreciated. And it comes from educators, educators who invest time and expertise in making education happen for so many. Together, educators unite with one voice to grow our public school system. Educators know that it takes professional salaries and wages, proper staff-to-student ratios, respect, recognition, and support from leadership in our buildings and from our central office and elected school board, dedicated to doing what is right for students, providing educators with tools and autonomy that open minds and doors for student success, a thriving community, and so much more. School board members, WCBA appreciates your work toward ratification of unit 2 and 3 for negotiated agreements that include raising wages and salaries to move in closer lineup with professionals outside of our system. We know this is long overdue and that continuing the process forwards recruitment and retention efforts of a highly qualified workforce. Third, our superintendent is frequently referenced for the work that she has done. Dr. Hanlon, a visionary, whose work has lifted our schools for the plan that follows the goals of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. Our stakeholders and teamwork are important in that process. But it is the strength of making that plan a success, and that strength lies with our educators and our students. We are the team. We need a leader who is on the field with us in our schools, planning the place, establishing schedules to honor collegial and individual planning time, supporting academic strength in classrooms and all the goals of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. A leader to unveil engaging curriculum that promises a productive workforce, like the Next Gen Student Academy, where teachers nurture the next generation of leaders inspired by curiosity, creativity, and innovation. A return to civility in our hallways and classrooms. A safe, positive learning environment where students are challenged to think. Their diverse needs are decked from teacher autonomy.
Thirty seconds.
I thank you for your time. Wycomical County Public Schools leadership cannot allow a shroud of complacency or censorship that narrows students' views of tough topics. We need leaders who will put students first. Leaders who have and who will act to prepare students for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Bob and Karen Hyatt.
I want to start off, good evening. I agree with everything that Pam said, but I'm also here for another issue. Our son attends Jameson Bennett. And not that our son has complained, but I would like to know, because I've heard all about the drugs and the vaping in the bathrooms and other things that are very inappropriate. What are you doing to address that? Because nobody has given me any.
We've talked to, so we've talked to a few of the ninth graders especially, who will not use the bathrooms during school hours because of the smoking and not just on the cigarette and marijuana, the vaping, and the older kids that are having sex in the bathroom. There was an incident that a white person, a white talked to a woman who walked in on a couple that were having sex in the bathroom, who threatened her should she say anything to anybody involved in it.
And the fact that that has happened again.
They'll think we did one of the addresses about the CRT issue. We want to make sure that CRT has not come to our county. We, we, we're not, we don't support CRT whatsoever and think it has absolutely no place in our education system and anywhere in our world, period. There's nothing but a social, it's in any system that doesn't belong here.
Thank you. The next public comment is Marvin Hutchinson. Forget to restart the clock there.
It might be good for us to take a minute to tend to that. Chill. Okay, so I rise to say thank you. I recognize, I, 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 you guys have a hard job. And I believe you aren't thanked enough. And not just you sitting at the table, but all of you who are involved in leadership of our school system, involved in the buildings, in, in the educational adventure in any way. It is not an easy time to be in leadership. And I know that you get things thrown at you all the time from the public. And I'm a member of the public. I spend a lot of time in the schools. I spend a lot of time talking to teachers and educators. My daughter was one. And I mentor students and I pray with folks at Pinehurst Elementary School every Wednesday before school starts. And so I'm there and I know how hard it is. And as a community member, as a member of the kindest BYU, kindest commission, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your investment. Thank you for doing your best. And I believe you do your very best. I may not agree with every decision you make, but I believe that you're doing your, what you think is your very best for our students, for our educational system. And so I just want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think you need to hear that again and again and again. Because if we don't have people in new positions, if we don't have people sitting at the board level and in the schools, what are we? And who are we going to be as a culture, as a society? We should review our educators. I appreciate all of you and who you are and what you're doing for our students and for our community. So thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen, Karen Kat. Okay, Pat, thank you. Okay, next speaker, Carlos Ayala. Issue textbooks.
Hi, thank you, members of the board and superintendent. By the way, I know exactly why Karen tapped on gas, because that was a cop out of the ball. It came up here and they, it was well said. I don't know, it was a few months ago that Florida announced that it were, I believe, banning or requiring it revise 41% out of, I think it was 41% of the math textbooks that were submitted. And more recent math, as I said, only 20 years ago, there were some examples given from textbooks that were banned or that had been revised. And I was looking at those and I was shocked. I'm genuinely shocked that this kind of stuff would be in math. And I spoke and I'm not getting an example. It was an exercise dealing with polynomials. The problem was given, showed the correlation between political identifications. So it started at, you know, very liberal to moderately liberal, you know, all the way up to very conservative. Right? So that's on the x-axis. On the y-axis is how racist they are. And as you would expect, in the little textbook, it aligned with my back. So what they were in teaching kids about math, what this textbook had, it was teaching these young, vulnerable kids that conservatives are racist. And hey, if you're, if you're, if you want to be one of the really good guys, you need to be liberal. In fact, you need to be married, because there were these places. And I'm assuming most of the people don't think that's appropriate in math class. And what I was wondering is, I was thinking like, there's no way that the math can ever go down. But I'd love to know that there's some process in place. Like I guess there's a bunch of Florida parents who thought, there's no way this kind of stuff would be in their textbooks. I didn't until DeSantis raised the issue. And so my, my question is, is there a process? Are there people who are reviewing these textbooks? And make sure this stuff like that is in there? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker is Monica Brooks. The issue is learning.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Monica Brooks. I'm a resident of Wycomical County. I was down back there trying to write some notes and it just never really happened. But I'm an educator. I teach foreign language. I teach a couple of languages. And over the last several years, I've noticed the difference in our students from years ago and according, of course, now since COVID. I'm very concerned about the learning abilities of our students and their ability to leave Wycomical County schools and go on to be productive members of society. As I've spoken to various friends of mine who are professors at Salisbury University, they're talking about how unprepared some of our students are academically on paper. It looks good, but functionally, many of them are behind. And I know, as Martin said, I concur. I grew up with two parents who were educators. Parents that actually made me do book reports in the summer. Yes, that's the kind of family I grew up with. Parents who literally would give by coach for kids and do whatever they put into assist students in need and all of that. I value learning. I think it's very important, but I know we're behind the eight wall with our kids. I think it's very important, but I know we're behind the eight wall with our kids and their ability to, to grasp what having been, you know, held and home. They don't even, they just, they're just not really connected. And I'm just wondering, as a school board, if you have been thinking of ways to reengage them, to try to get them back. There are students who were completely in, who are just lost now. Students who are, who missed that whole period of, of going into middle school or just started middle school and then they jump right into high school and asking about how come there's no recess in high school? So their, their minds are just behind and, and I'm just, I'm concerned. I'm not concerned as a point of the finger, point of the finger kind of way. I'm concerned in the way of just asking, is this something that you're looking at on how we can fix it? Because the students who were behind are super behind.
Thirty seconds.
And the students who were doing okay, some of them have fallen behind. And there are people who are focusing more on tests, which somebody mentioned earlier, passing a test as opposed to learning. It's more about learning. It's more about the journey. It's more about preparing them for life as opposed to checking off a box for tests. So I'm just imploring you to really consider that greatly and those of you who are looking to be head of the school board to also make that a priority.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comment portion of the meeting. And we typically don't respond to public comment at the time of public comment, but we do have, based on our website, where we now post answers to questions, issues, and concerns that are appropriate to put there. They're not personally related to a certain student, teacher, whatever. So all these comments will, we all took notes and go back to the administration. We do that and figure out what we can put on the website, where appropriate, where needed, you'll get a response from directly from someone in the school system. So we obviously appreciate your public comment and we appreciate your support of the Wycomical County Public School System. So moving to the next item, three point six, the superintendent's report, Dr. Henley.
I want to ask just one more members of those of you who are joining us this evening. We begin with a special presentation this evening. Mrs. Wallston, do you want to come up? And this is a presentation by Mrs. Grace Murdock and Reverend Martin Hutchinson, related to their work on kindness in our schools. So Mrs. Wallston is the director of special ed, but she has been very involved in this project at Parkside High School and now all of our schools, all of our high schools.
Thank you so much, Dr. Henley. For members and, and those that have joined us this evening, it is such a pleasure and honor to be able to introduce our guests this evening. One who has already spoken in every, Martin Hutchinson, who is the secretary of community gardens for the city of Salisbury. And our kindness secretary, Mrs. Grace Murdock, who is for the city of Salisbury as well. And has been the one that has been spreading that kindness. I'm sure many of you saw this evening, as you came into the school, the sign that said hashtag Kind SBY, where Salisbury School is a school of kindness. And so kindness spreads. It costs us nothing to be kind to each other. And this movement has taken an inflammation that has been absolutely contagious throughout all 24 schools. But we really, as we have heard, others have shared and we read the, the articles regarding the high school students and the challenges that they especially face. So once again, Mrs. Murdock and Reverend Hutchinson have, along with our communities, supported the expansion of helping our high school students to be able to cope with the rainy living and spread kindness and smiles and making a difference in their school community, in their homes, and throughout our community. So it is my pleasure to have them come and share what we are doing to expand this project that began as a seed pilot project at Parkside High School. Reverend Hutchinson?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're thrilled to be here to talk about the expansion of the launch of the Kindness Rocks and Smiles Community Project. And in the picture that you see before you, next to Martin, is Megan Maloney Murphy, who some of you might remember that she initiated the kindness rocks and brought it to a new level where many communities across the nation and the world paint rocks and put them out. She was here in November. And the fellow with the lovely tie-dye shirt is John Slimm, and he is an author of over 20 books, some of them cookbooks. And he was the originator of the smiles project. And Megan's thoughts are that when you write something on a rock, it could be the one inspirational message that you find that could change the complexion of your whole day. And John's mission was by putting smile banners around, that if you could express how you're feeling at the time where you're filling out the smile, the face, that it would have an insight and an impact on people's mental health, as well as mental health through the kindness rocks of painting them. So they combined to do this project. And as Bonnie said, in November, there was a national launch of their project at Parkside and it went absolutely beautifully. The students came out, they started the banners, and now I believe it hangs proudly in the cafeteria. Along with the kit, there are some other things in the kit that we have brought tonight. And I'm going to ask DeShawn Doughty and Michelle Nelson, two other of our kindness commissioners, to do the grand reveal underneath our beautiful tablecloth. And these additional kits, you can just let it fall, it's fine. Yeah? These additional kits, the one near Michelle, yeah, you can open it. And we're going to reveal some of the things that are in the kit because along with the banners that you see here, there are also materials to support the teachers, social workers, and guidance counselors to use with students. And it is just so perfect that May is Mental Health Month. And this will be an insight into kids' mental health, perhaps by how, what they put on these banners. These boxes, these kits are going to go to the remaining high schools and to Choices Academies. So Mardella, James MB, and Y-HI, if you'll come forward, you can get a close look at what's in the kit. And Michelle, she'll start pulling some things out and we'll take a look at them. The elements are very, they lend toward creativity for all the users. Yes, let's show the banner. In each one of the boxes, there comes a banner. And the students walk up to it and they have paint pens also inside the kit. And they are asked to draw either what their smile is and to put an inspirational message on the rocks. One banner comes in the kit, so for every one of these high schools, they also are being given additional banners. And they are waterproof if you do it outside, but then I'm certainly hoping you'll bring it inside so everybody can enjoy. I have heard from Parkside School how much the children enjoy walking by and the adults walk by the banner and enjoy what was written on it and the smiles that come. And it would also be a particularly good insight into if you saw a child walk up and did not have a smile or an expression that made you feel comfortable, you might know that it was someone that you may have to reach out to or would like to reach out to. So let's see what else is inside. We'll pull that up after a while. The paint pens are inside. You know, I've got two vanuans up here and DeShawn with the helping. The paint pens, yeah. And let me tell you right now, you need to prepare them. You don't just walk up and start using them. You have to dab them and prepare them, okay? We also have some bracelets that ask the students how they're feeling that day. And if the social worker or guidance counselor teacher would see a particular color, they would know that that color code meant that they might want someone to talk with them. So there are a few of those. Next, DeShawn, yeah? These are crayons and postcards that the children can, the students can write on and draw on and they can be shared and positive message can be shared around. What else we got, Michelle? Yeah, these are toothbrushes that they put inside these kits so that the older children would have something to give to younger children, thus teaching kindness and giving them an avenue in order to do that. What's that? Yeah, you make a pretty smile, exactly. And here are the books that go along with the kit that give the people who are using them, the adults, how to implement the program. And I would urge everyone who would like to know more about it to just beam up KRS Community Project. It is, they are delivering these kits to everyone nationally. They are going out a little bit at a time. And Martin's at my hope, having experienced this and getting to know John and Megan, is that we can extend this to the entire county. These have come to our schools because Giving Tuesday, through Community Foundation of Easton Shore, we were, people donated funding to us. And we were only so glad to add additional funds to that so that each one of the kits could be presented to you. And we hope that you enjoy them with your students. Thank you very much. And you can pick them up a little later. Yes, Dr. Henley, would you come down from please? There's just one additional item.
While we're at the podium, we want to take a moment to recognize Dr. Henley's six years of leadership here in our county. We are grateful for your leadership and we are going to miss you. That we understand that a beautiful time is ahead with the family and we are excited about that, Woody. We appreciate not only your leadership, but your ability and your willingness to include the kindness commission in the activities of the school, to be a part of our designation as a first world kindness USA city by signing a charter that the school board would live by. And we want to do some things to, for you to remember us. This was purchased at Parkside A Plus Garden Center. It looked beautiful before it came into my care. I have not been able to convince you, Kelly, he does a great job, but he sells things too early and it's so cold out. And these flowers didn't like the cold, but I am confident that in your nurturing and your love, you can make this thing look beautiful again. And so here is this for you. And then here is a special handmade one of the kind items from local Potter to say thank you for all of you that, God bless.
Thank you. And Grace and Martin, I'd also like to say, because of, of your inspiration, I search high and low because you have changed the complexion and the color of kindness in our community. They have even now sanctioned colors of kindness coloring books and crayons with all the colors of kindness. So if we wanted to give you this small token, for you and Martin Esperance, and for our commissioners, I say to you, please continue, it's such a, please continue this way, as we see our students and you've heard those leaders, that are only to be the ones that are going to carry this on. Thank you so very much. Enjoy.
For all the work that you do to support our schools, it's great, we appreciate it. Well, we next up, Mr. Butler, extra mile awards.
Testing, okay. Did it work? All right, this is my favorite time of the event of our board meetings is giving out the extra mile awards that we can recognize some outstanding employees who have, over the last thirty days, gone extra mile, they've gone above and beyond. So when I call your name, come on down, we'll recognize you. Our first is Abigail Urban. Abigail from Long, with two accidents. She's a special education teacher in our Birth to Five program. And Abby, I'm going to embarrass you a little bit. Come on down. Come on down. Stand right here. So I'm going to read a little bit about what Abby has done to make her stand out and be a special Wycomical County Employee of the Month in our extra mile award. So Abby continually goes above and beyond for the families on her caseload and always volunteers for extra duties to help further the betterment of our program. Mrs. Urban maintains a full caseload of families with Birth to Five program. Additionally, she is a member of the Child Find IP team, participating in several meetings a week and completing the educational assessments for our youngest children who may be experiencing difficulties. She is a special education teacher for children receiving services at Head Start and has been extremely proactive and helpful during the pre-K registration process, encouraging families to prepare for registration. There's one. Abby helped to coordinate the Mother Goose on the Loose program where families come in each week to participate in a social activity with other families that is centered around learning through song. Now during the pre-K prep program, she helped families receive early intervention services through the Birth to Five program. She had the opportunity to participate in weekly evening activities to prepare children for successful entry into pre-K setting coming up into the fall. And for that, Abby will congratulate you as an extra mile winner of the month. Stay right there, Dr. Henley and Mr. Malone, come on in, Abby right there. And I'm going to give her a award for her. This is yours as well. Tracy's going to take your picture. Congratulations, Abigail Urban, and our extra mile winners for the month of April. Thank you, Mrs. Atkins, as well. Our next extra mile award winner for the month of April is Chris McLaughlin. He's a dean of students at North Salisbury School. He'll come up with Miss Kit Benny, principal at North Salisbury. And Chris will embarrass you too. Chris is constantly going above and beyond. Come on down a little bit more so we can get you the picture. There you go. He builds relationships with the student body, has a great job of this. He reaches out to parents to build rapport with them, which is so important. For the prime after school, Chris helps teachers come up with innovative plans and activities that are engaging and fun and allows students to learn. Overall, he consistently promotes teamwork by helping in cooperating outside of requirements. We appreciate his perspective on progressive discipline and he's always trying to show grace and kindness to the students whenever possible. He is a huge asset, asset that is to the team at North Salisbury. And for that, we appreciate all he does. We recognize you this month as an extra mile award winner. So come on down, you and Miss Kit. After him and Mr. Malone come in. And Chris, I'll grab your awards. And Mrs. Saylor's going to get you a picture. Congratulations, Chris McLaughlin. Thank you very much. Okay, our final extra mile award winner for the month of April is Betty Rigor. Betty, come on down. Betty is an accounting associate at Perrin Elementary School. She's accompanied by principal Dr. Brian Kessler. She's accompanied by Principal Dr. Brian Kessler. Betty, you don't get any special treatment either. We've got to embarrass you too. Come on down. You're already embarrassed, huh? Come on down a little bit further. There you go. All right, so Betty Anne goes above and beyond her job duties as an accounting associate at Perrin. She's a friend of ours, constantly coming up with ways to build staff morale, organizing staff breakfasts, treats for lunches, or a pick-me-up note for the staff. Betty Anne organized meals and gift baskets and delivered them to their homes after school. She organizes end-of-the-year retirement celebrations, making every employee retiring feel very special. She searches and contacts family members for the employees interested and then creates awesome retirement memories. Betty Anne is one of the most dedicated employees and would be a perfect Extra Mile Award recipient as she goes above and beyond every day. And that's why you're here tonight, because you are one of our Extra Mile Award winners for the month of April. So Dr. Kessler, come on in. Dr. Hanlon, Mr. Malone, we'll do this one more time. All right, let's give a big hand to Betty Rigger and all of our Extra Mile Award winners for the month of April.
We're attending the having screen grants report.
Yes, real quick, pleased to be able to share some information from our April grants report. This past month, we received funding for three grants totaling $600. All three grants were from the University of Maryland Eastern Shore for our VP AR program to aid in the purchase of the plot. We submitted applications for another four grants and other four that I'll take everyone on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon. 4.1 approval of the open session minutes from the last public meeting, which was April 12th. I'll entertain a motion.
Vot approve.
Motion that's second, although it's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carry. Okay, consent items are 5.1 through 5.10. 5.11, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve consent items?
Vot approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Although it's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carry. Okay, 6.1. At the April 7 meeting of Curriculum Council, issues in science from Lab Aid was presented as a recommended core instructional resource for middle school science classes. This resource received unanimous support from the council with a recommendation that move forward to the board for consideration and approval. On the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the Lab Aid's Issues in Science Program for first reading?
Vot approve.
There's a motion and a second. So for discussion, Dr. Reger and Miss Imalat Abaxorah. Yeah, I was going to say Reger, but I don't think people are going to be able to hear you in this.
Can you hear me? Second group? Let's try this. Okay. Good evening, Chair Malone, Vice Chair Murray, Dr. Hanlon, members of the board. If people in the audience, the public, hear it, if you can hear me. Okay, thank you. It is my pleasure to be down here tonight to present a new core instructional resource for middle school science. One of my last jobs as science supervisor was to begin review of instructional materials for middle school science. And we did a request for proposals back in the spring. I heard from a number of vendors, we narrowed it down to two, to pilot. And I passed that on to Ms. Besperon, she became science supervisor over the summer, and she completed the pilot and a number of features during her school year. She can tell you a little bit about that.
Good evening. And thank you so much for the opportunity to present. So we identified two products to pilot during the school year. And Lab Aid was unanimously voted up by all the teachers who participated. There were 17 teachers who actively piloted the program in all of our youth schools. We had over 600 students who actually gave feedback. And Lab Aid was the product that helped them kick in on the new student community.
And also, the students were so enthusiastic. I've heard again, I visited a middle school science classroom last week, and students who participated in the pilot of the product who didn't select in the first semester were jealous of those students coming back and asking their teachers, why didn't you get to do these fun things you're doing in this semester with the product? Lots of enthusiasm across the board, so withstand for any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Reger?
I just want to state that as a member of the curriculum committee, I wish the audience here could have been with us when the presentations were made at the curriculum committee meeting from the teachers who are piloting this program. The enthusiasm was wonderful. And I think it's the program I'm glad we are going to have.
Any other comments from the board?
I have a comment. As an individual with the opportunity to work both under Dr. Reger and work side by side with Ms. Besperon, the time and effort I know that they put into their labs and the time they put into the labs that I executed was fantastic. And I know two of the middle school teachers who are on the list who piloted the program. And my children actually had those two individuals. So I thought it was a great Lab Aid to use. And the students are absolutely excited. They're diving right in, hands on, they're doing things, they're using equipment. They're doing more than just learning. So I apologize for that. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
It's a fine comment. The presentation, as Mrs. Naski said, was well done by the teachers. It's particularly good because it's a hand-on project. Kids really enjoy it. And I think more kinds of things that we do like that, where it's more beneficial to the students.
Okay, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion to approve the Lab Aid's Issues in Science Program for first reading. Although it's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's carried. Thank you both. 6.2. At the April 7 meeting of Curriculum Council, the novel Van Ness's book was presented for consideration for use in fourth grade ELA classes. The novel received unanimous support from the council with recommendation that move forward to the board for consideration and approval. On the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the novel Van Ness's book for first reading?
I make a motion that means approve.
So a second?
Second.
All right, so you're not Dr. Renee Hall.
I am not Dr. Hall, I'm a associate today, so I'm here to share some information about this novel. You've seen me here every month presenting novels. We're making a concerted effort to enhance the amount of novels available for instruction in our classroom, which of course go through a much more rigorous review process when they're used for instruction in a classroom. This was shared with students using it in a pilot setting and reviewing. We have the packet, in your package, reviewed by parents, students, and teachers. Very well received. Just a couple of things I'd point out. Some of the reviews, the parent duty, that it educates students on built rights. Sparks debate on right and wrong ways to make change. The content was appropriate. And it does show that for adolescent children who quote that there were consequences for acting, even if their intentions were good. Teaching them to think things through, accept responsibility. As someone else said, teaching them how to disagree without being disagreements. I think it's a very worthwhile lesson to share with our 2nd and 5th grade students.
Any questions, Dr. Reger?
I totally believe it all. I love that little book. I thought it was just well-written. My favorite character, however, was not the main character, but the wannabe lord. The side kid whose parents were attorneys, and she kept ringing at legal matters for what they could do and what they couldn't do. I think the fourth graders who read this will enjoy the book. I certainly enjoyed reading it.
I'd just like to add that I enjoyed reading the comments from the students that read the book. It's really interesting what they have to say. And for the parents out there, these books do go through a process where parents, as well as students, as well as administration and teachers, they'll locate the book before it goes out into the classroom. So I'd like to just emphasize that.
As the third member of the curriculum committee, I actually was not able, I was not able to be in attendance at the meeting. So I have not had the opportunity to read the book cover to cover. However, I have read all the reasons for recommending and not recommending. So I, of course, Dr. Reger, would love to get a copy of the book to read.
Okay, we'll do this, come on.
Okay, perfect. So I will not be leaving the book as I have it covered up.
We'll be back in a second reading next, assuming any.
I agree with Mr. Brown, some of the reviews, and one of them in particular from a student, teaches kids they can make a difference, teaches kids can make a change. So for teaching our children that, that's outstanding. Any other questions or comments? Not assuming you're ready to vote on the motion to approve the novel Van Ness's book for first reading. Although it's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Abstention? This is Larry Lewis's name. All right. It carries. Thank you. Thank you. 6.3. Four Destination Imagination teams from North Salisbury Elementary, Salisbury Middle, and two teams at West Side Intermediate from Montgomery County Public Schools qualified to advance to global finals. One team, Salisbury Middle, has decided to advance to the global finals in Kansas City, Missouri on May 21 to 24, 2022. On the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve a donation of $350 to assist with travel expenses?
Vot approve.
So a second? Okay. Susan Bowns? No. Okay. I knew it was going to speak. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. It's been two years since 2019. We have not been here to request assistance to go to global finals. However, our teams did participate in virtual seasons both years and did well. This year, we've sent 12 teams to the state tournament and had four teams qualify for global finals. Now, it's incredibly expensive to go to global finals. This is the one team who is brave enough to do fundraises and take that risk, and they were traveling to Kansas City in the fall. I'd like for them to introduce themselves. And then two members would like to speak because I think it best comes from the participants to share with you what DI needs to know. So boys are going to step in. This is our next team, so I'm going to ask them to tell where they go to school. We have several schools represented. My name is Tobias McKinnon, and I'm at Old School.
My name is Marsha Devlin. I go to Stepping Stones Elementary.
Hi, my name is Anthea Busburn. I go to Bennett Middle School.
Hello, my name is Joshua Strickland, and I go to Salisbury Middle School.
So I've learned a lot from DI. DI has taught me a lot of things that I use in the real world. It's really helpful. I've learned how to work in a team. That's, well, that's the main thing about DI. But it really helps with other things when I'm in, when I'm putting groups in school. It's easier to work with them because I've been in DI. And another thing I've learned is how to creatively solve problems. So like, the main thing about DI, again, is solving problems creatively, finding numerous ways to do it, each one unique. So like, I use it in the real world whenever I have a problem. I find a really easy way to do it, and that's what DI is taught me.
So during my six years of experience with Destination Imagination, I've also learned how to do a lot of physical, like, hands-on, learning and creating. Me and several other teammates here have actually learned how to use, like, power tools. Safety, of course. And, you know, personally, I think it's a really great skill. I've used it not only in DI, but actually, like, repairing some other things in my house. We've also learned how to, like, design and think of, use our imagination and think of new props. One of the things that we do in here is create all the props. That's something I've always done, we always use something to create a compound that all folds together. Because one of our problems is having to be able to put it in a trailer and get it halfway across the air. We've also learned a lot about, well, personally, I've learned a lot about sewing, actually. Everything that I know about sewing was directly from Destination Imagination. This year specifically, we had to create a transforming costume that transformed in front of the audience's eyes without adding, taking away anything. And considering that most of us had, we have mostly boys on our team, it was a really difficult thing because if you go online and look, there's almost none of that. So we had to create a completely original design and then actually take that into action. For me, the work, the reason why I keep coming back, you know, the work is difficult. It's challenging each year. But the reason why I keep coming back is each year I learn something new. Whether it be something visible, like sewing, or actually using power tools, or something like team building. I always learn something new each year. And it's always, it's always amazing to see how other students and kids across the globe solve the same problem that I have to. Thank you.
This team's been competing, some of the members for as long as six years, and they keep coming back each year because of the challenge that it presents. And they are up to the challenge, believe me. They will represent us well at global finals. I want to introduce to you Rana Evenhour. This is, I have been with DI more than 30 years, and I'm now retiring from DI. So I'm passing the torch to Rana, who has 17 years' experience and is well-prepared to take on the task. I hope I'm well-prepared. I'm not ready to worship. I have ginormous shoes to fill. Hopefully, I can do it as a good example. But I plan on being here for a while to help more teams be able to against the global experience. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
I just want to say how absolutely proud I am of you for your commitment to the DI program and thinking outside of the box and being creative and using your designs and being compelled to learn from your other groups that you're going to be competing against on how to solve a problem in multiple ways. So, great job, kids.
Congratulations on what you've done so far. And I'm sure you're representing as well a anti-civic, well-spoken group. And thank you, Susan and Rana, for what you do. Any other comments? If not, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion to approve a donation of $350 to assist with travel expenses for the DI team. Although it's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it carries. Thank you. 6.4. Per the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve- Per the superintendent's recommendation, is our motion to accept the proposal in the attached exhibit one from the firm of craftery, Ruval and Associates for additional proposed services for Mardell Public Middle and High Renovation Edition project. Scope of services, conform drawings, ad built, and furniture layouts, $58,900, by your motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? This is Ashby. We got it.
Good evening, Dr. Henley, Chairman Lo, Vice Chairman, and members. This recommendation is to proceed with already negotiated additional services, as noted. These services are already included in the overall project budget. Are there any questions regarding this recommendation?
I just want to make a comment to this Ashby. You can call her later.
Yes, thank you. Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Ballmer.
Ms. Ashby, could you just briefly tell us what the public will be seeing happening out in Mardell to say over the summer and up to the beginning of next year?
They'll be seeing portals and modulars being set up towards the front of the building that will provide swing space. So when students come back to school in the fall, that will actually be modifying a portion of the existing building as well as the modulars that were placed out front. They'll be seeing some demolitions started towards the rear of the building as well as some addition work in the form of a new panel electric over towards the rear.
Move along.
Okay, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion to accept the proposal in the attached exhibit one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It carries. 6.5. Per the superintendent's recommendation, is our motion to authorize a following contract amendment to the contracting firm, The Wayter Turner Contracting Company, to incorporate this material purchase into the future guaranteed maximum price for the Wycomico High HBAC project. She metal and copper piping, the amount of $701,134, entertain motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? This is Ashby.
Good evening again. These materials, there was an anticipated increase in cost, therefore, construction manager placed an order in advance. This package was contested in bid, and is for all phases of the project. Are there any questions regarding this recommendation?
No. Okay. Assuming you're ready to vote on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? All right, it carries. 6.6. Per the superintendent's recommendation, is our motion to accept the proposal in the attached exhibit one from David War Associates, Inc., for owner representation services. Entertain motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Mrs. Ashby.
Good evening again. Due to staff shortages and the significant increase in volume of projects, we've had to develop various strategies regarding contracted services to ensure that funding deadlines of several projects are being met. This is especially critical given the many projects scheduled for this summer. Some examples of owner representation services during construction include coordination with school-based administration teams regarding phasing, moving, and scheduling, coordination with the maintenance, operations, technology, and food service departments, attending progress meetings, reviewing RFI's, invoices, submittals, and monitoring construction progress in relation to back-to-school preparations. This recommendation is for owner representation services for the Pinehurst Elementary HBAC Window Door Project, as well as the Chipman HBAC Window Door Project. The various terms and conditions with the proposed contracted services were defined in accordance with procurement procedures and in consultation with the boards and structures during. Are there any questions regarding this recommendation?
So have we used this firm before or used owner services before?
No, this is our question.
And it's because we have so many projects going on?
Correct. A lot of those are asset-funded projects.
Okay. I'm sure I understand.
But that really tight down.
Right. Any other questions? Okay, assuming you're ready to vote on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It carries. 6.7. Upon the recommendation, superintendent, is our motion to approve the amended lease agreement for our 24 to 24 North Peak Drive. The original lease agreement was approved by the board in May 2015 and is a multi-year lease through June 30, 2035. The purpose of this amendment is to acquire 4,45 square feet of newly available space that will provide WCPS with necessary additional space for storage, meetings, and workspace. Entertain motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Gotcha. Dr. Stolper. You're going to vote, or is it?
I am. Thank you to the board members. As described, this would increase the amount of available space at the North Peak complex by about 15% as compared to what we're currently using as available now. As you know, federal and state funding have enabled Wycomico Public Schools to increase technology for students to a one-to-one ratio, which has also required us to increase three additional technology specialist positions to maintain that larger inventory of devices. In addition, we have also been able to bring in additional staff over the last couple of years to address the mental health needs of our, of our students. So this new space will give us room to accommodate 12 additional staff in that new area, as well as, at the same time, provide us with needed additional space for meetings and storage as well. So we're making determinations now as to specifically which staff will be utilizing that space once it's approved.
Any questions from the board or comments? Okay, seeing now that I assume you're ready to vote on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It carries. Thank you, Dr. Stolper. 6.8. Personnel Matters is for information only. 7.1. Board Member Reports. So I'll start to my left with Ms. Anne Stavowski.
First of all, I'd like to remind the public that prior to each DI evening, we, members of board, spend many hours in meetings and readings to prepare for the meetings. We have spent much time in preparation for the meetings this evening. Sometimes people think we just vote on things that we've just heard, but no, we have spent much time in preparation for the meeting. We've had many meetings this month, but those of you who know me well know that I like to get out and meet people and go to many functions. I had lunch with the Lower Shore delegation, but one thing I attended this month was absolutely spectacular, and this was the Gold Cali High School musical when they presented Into the Woods. Now, this is a San Hyde production. This is not Metro Project. This is a difficult work. Our students did it beautifully. I was so proud of them. I had seen it done professionally at the Kennedy Center. I liked our, our version. I also attended the State of Schools luncheon with Dr. Hayman. That was a wonderful luncheon. I went to the county council meeting where we recognized our teacher of the years. I went to the community prayer breakfast, and yesterday, we had lunch with the state superintendent of schools over at the Ward Foundation Ward Museum, sponsored by the Greater Salisbury Committee. I've also attended this month two fundraisers for scholarships. The SWAC Salisbury Wycomico Arts Council had Arts on the River, where they raised money for scholarships for seniors who are going to pursue a career in the arts. There's also an organization in the community, the PEO. These women have a fundraiser every year to give a scholarship to non-traditional students. These are women who have interrupted their education but want to go back. And the lady who received the award this year now works for the Wycomico Cali Health Department. So I've been busy. I like, like what I do, and thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Ms. Anne. Mr. Brown.
A couple weeks ago, I visited our library downtown before I saw the library to view the BPA Art Program. We have a visual art program at Wycomico Senior High School where students from all over the county can go. These students are ones that are gifted in certain areas, and it gives them an opportunity to go outside of the box. And some of them are prepared, feel striking, they do things that you would actually see in art museums. It was very, very interesting, the fact that I saw works of art from all four of the high schools. So even though these students may attend their homeschooling in Mardell or Parkside or James and Bennett, they can go to Y High for the visual arts program. So that was very, the program is certainly an asset to our school system because it gives those students who have that talent and the ability to go outside. Secondly, I went to the opening day program for the Harrius Parker Athletic Complex, opening day season four softball. And the reason I, baseball, the reason I mentioned that is the fact that this is the second year that we have a program there for students with special abilities, some of our specialty kids. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Biden-Walls and for her working with the county to develop this program. There are two areas. One is an inclusive playground, which is designed basically to allow students with special needs to enjoy a playground. Particular design for them, they can roll up with their wheelchairs and actually get involved with physical activity. I talked to six parents, and they were envious about this project and about this program because it's really not money where it's short. And also, there is a second area, which is called the seven-and-a-half ball field. And believe it or not, these kids were able to play baseball. And it was interesting to see the number of agencies in town, such as the Fraternity Order, organizations, the county and the city government, as well as some of the rugby clubs and American leagues, who actually helped fund this project. And these children were really, you could see the smile on their face when they're able to actually hit a ball and then either run around the bases or have someone work with them to get around the bases. And it's one of those where everybody gets an opportunity to hit the ball, and it was just sort of a joy for our own. The last thing I want to say is that I think Jeremiah Open did it at Wycomico County School System. Woo! I went to, you know, Salisbury University, as well as the City of Salisbury, and Greg Hill put his talent in making it all the way to the seventh round in American Idol. I'm sure it's going to be a springboard for him. In fact, he has a record coming up this Friday. So it's going to be a big plus factor for him and really put Salisbury on the map in terms of American Idol. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Ballmer.
Just we got the building commission meeting, it was held at the new Beaver Run Elementary School. There was no helmets, no eyeglasses, no steel toe boots required. The school is just about ready for people's dark news. In fact, it's going to be opening in the fall. Teachers right now are moving some of their stuff into the school. During the summer, you're going to be seeing part of the old school, school starting to be dismantled. So that's been a long time coming. I've even had some people ask if they could have some of the bricks that came out of the old school. And I'm quite now how to approach that yet, but I'll see Diesel about it, and she'll have the answer to it, so. I'd like to reiterate something that Ms. Stavowski said, and that's the amount of time going into the research of some of these consent items. Some of them are quite long, I mean, 12, 14 pages, and you get a lot of questions, and you go back and forth with a lot of the administrators trying to find the answers to it. And they do give you answers, and it gives us a good idea on how to vote for all the items that come up on, on our agenda. It's not just done at will, I can show you that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballmer. Ms. Blair Lewis.
Well, that was rather short, Mr. Ballmer.
And yours, Missy.
Well, actually, I attended many of the same events that the other board members did, and, just a second, on the things that we learned from attending them and connections that we're making, but just a couple of things I did attend was the dedication of poetry postcards downstairs at the library. I know I saw some of the individuals in the audience there, and that was, that was fantastic. And then, once I was done that, I went into the library and toured all of the artwork. So the students did a very, very good job on being creative and thinking outside of the box. So that was a delight to go through and see those. But my main event that I did was I traveled away six hours with some Wycomico County students and some sister county students to compete in the Maryland High School Wordio Association. Many of you may not know that, but we do have student athletes that participate in this, and I know that there are many members in this room who have been able to experience that, and my child participates with that. So not all students participate in school sports. They, they do other things. They do outside clubs, they are home schooled, and they, and they join DI. There are many, many opportunities in Wycomico County for our students who may just not be in with a school sport or a school club, but there are so many different extrapolar activities. But we traveled to Benham, Pennsylvania, and competed, and Maryland is ranking extremely high right now with their breakaway, worthy go-tying poles and barrel competition. They have their state finals for Maryland coming up May 20th, 21st, and 22nd down at the Princess Anne Fairgrounds. So if you're looking for something to do that weekend, you will see an amazing group of 60 students from the state of Maryland, and they attend public schools. It is a fantastic event to come out and watch, so I would love to see you there showing support for that. And I just wanted to say thank you to the PTAs that are still remaining in the county and all of the faith-based outreachers who have just showered our teachers with love and compassion during Teacher Appreciation Week. I spoke with many teachers from many different schools, and they were just so thankful for the, the things that you did for them, the small little tokens, some appreciation, to the chocolates and the candies and the poem and the pictures on the walls and quotes from the students, and just simply saying thank you. And that's all that I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Okay, well, thank you and good evening, everyone. As we get toward the end of our board reports, like Ms. Blair Lewis said, it's kind of repetitive, and I'm too repetitive of all these events. Enjoyed every one of them, as I always do. But I want to take a moment to do some thank yous. And I first want to thank our HGA reps that have been with us all here, and they did an outstanding job, and keeps all of us updated with what's going on in our schools, and I think we've all been learned from that. I also want to thank Rainsburg for Mark County for your constant continuing positiveness in our community, in our schools, and everywhere. We need to spread that word, and I personally want to thank you for that. I also want to thank our public speakers for sharing their thoughts and things, and the president said, you take this, you know, there's a follow-up. Thank you for sharing that. And again, I want to thank Dr. Hayman and all of her staff for the past year and a half, and all the teachers, particularly, I thought I was going to get to this without any further mention, but she did Teacher Appreciation
mentioning it, but she did Teacher Appreciation Week. And I do hear the kind of things that is being done, and I appreciate that, that you shared with the teachers and all the staff. All the staff that come in contact with students every day, that is important, and a very important role to continue. So again, congratulations for Teacher Appreciation Week to all the staff. I chose to share a couple of things that I want to leave tonight as I close, and I will tell you exactly where I'm pulling this from. Some of you know that I was an educator and a principal at one time before I retired, but Special Olympics and specialties children has always been in my heart, in my background. So I'm sharing this with you from a Special Olympics athlete, and the words are so appropriate for all students, and I would share this now. I admire your effort and your determination and your desire. I know you've had worked hard, and I wish you the best of luck in your competitions. Always remember that just by participating, you are learning. That is appropriate for all students, not just Special Olympics, but all students, and needs to be shared. That's something that a parent or a teacher can share in their homes and their classrooms with all students, and I think it is. The next one, you might find a little amusing, but I recently shared my tenure at high school with you. No, I'm just teasing. We are very blessed with one of our historians that has been our storied since we graduated. I graduated Wycomico in class of 76, by Saint Andrew. And I asked her if I could share this, and she said, she goes, Susan Webster, some of you may or may not know, but they're still live here in the world. But there were several things that there were two I want to share. Some of us, and this was shared on our reading, talking about us as kids and all of you and your children. Some of us came from large families with many siblings, and others had grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins living with us or nearby. Everyone's mother could discipline you. They were united in the unofficial mother's heart in your neighborhood. They were the eyes everywhere you could not get away with much. And it's interesting to look at some of the things in comparison times. The other one, it's fun to look back, but sometimes a little bittersweet, but there are common threads throughout our individual histories that we need to remember. To hang on to, as we traverse this complicated and often frightened world, where we all started from the same place, and those shared memories are what can make us each other as people and not labels the world has assigned to us. I think that's an important message for all of us, not just our students. The other one came, this one is not from Susan, but another classmate, and this is something that I think, again, goes with Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'm just pulling it from the card. And it's, we thank the devoted lives of teachers, coaches, mentors, and family who nurtures us as we grew. Important. Just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
And I should have mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting. Mr. Fitzgerald, our seventh board member, had some surgery yesterday and was certain that he would be released and be here. And he was released today, and he texted me and said he might still make it here, but he did not. I've been checking my phone throughout the night, and I'm not trying to be rude, but he sent to me things, you should do this, you should do that. I want to move closer to the mic. So if you're still watching, Mr. Fitzgerald, we wish you and get well soon. I was absent at the board meeting in April. I had to be away for business slash personal business and business business, but I apologize for that. So some of the events I might talk about were from March. I did the Reading Day in Pemberton in March, attended the ESPN Economic Forum, which probably most of my colleagues don't find an interest in that, but it's a lifetime anchor that interests me, so I attend that. Volunteered at JA Inspire, attended Dr. Haylon's State of the Schools event, which happens to be her last State of the Schools event, which, sorry to say, but we attended that. And then yesterday, I was with the state superintendent at the Greater Salisbury meeting. We got to hear him address some of his plans for the future. And like Mr. Brown, I watched Jeremiah Hoplin on American Idol. Honestly, American Idol wasn't a program that was in my program viewing before that. I watched it some, but I watched it, and then, I'm not high-tech, but my wife had an iPhone, said you could vote five times, so she did that. And give me your phone, give me your phone, so she could vote five times from my phone. And then she's calling all our children and daughters-in-law, saying, vote five times, vote five times. So we were into it, and he certainly made Wycomico County Public Schools proud. And I can recall CNN performing that. And then a few years from now, when he's famous, we'll all say, oh, we were there with Jay Hoplin at that high school. But to Mr. Brown's point, it was awesome, and I thought it should have been in the top five, but that's the way it goes. So, as you know, I love quotes, and so I was thinking about, our next meeting will be June 14th, and we'll be in half days, right? School's almost out. So I was thinking about the end of the school year, and tonight, we have a great turnout once again, which is appreciated. So I want to talk about the end of the year. So my quote is, "Success is the sum of small efforts repeated day in, day out." And I think that certainly applies to our teachers, staff, over this past year. It was a very trying year, yet it was very interesting. It was challenging for teachers and for staff. It was also challenging for parents and students. And we never forget that the parents have to deal with all the things that we end up having to rule on, approve, whether it's popular or not, and try to make the best decisions at the time on the information we have. But we appreciate all the community members and parents. It's just not easy. I get that. I raised three children in public schools as well. But I want to thank faculty and staff and teachers. I witnessed every single day what you did to bring success to every student one day at a time, and you do a great job of doing that. We appreciate it, and pretty soon, you'll have a little time off in the summer, and it's well deserved. It's well deserved for the parents and the community to have a little break from school. So to all the people here this evening and those watching, all the teachers and staff, thank you, thank you for all that you do for our students, and we appreciate your participation and continued support of our school system. And with that, we're adjourned, and safe travels on your way home. Thank you.